I'd like to call the meeting to order if you can stand for the pledge, please. Camera will set the roll call.
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Result of the Board of Education approved the agenda for the January 24th, 2022 regular Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Kaylee first. Second Denise. All in favor? Opposed? Pass is eight zero. We do not have this Board of Education spotlight tonight due to this being our first meeting over at the Transportation Center. We wanted to make sure that we have everything all set and we have everything set going forward. I'd like to thank Kim and RJ for all their help in getting us set up here with all the technology with this move and also the cabinet for picturing the layout that we got suited for the community. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Sam Meyer, who's the head custodian over at Derby Junior High School and his team for the many years of preparing the building for all of our meetings. We appreciate all of their efforts over the years. Next up on the agenda, we have Correspondence, Board Activities, and Committee Reports. On January 13th, we had a Wellness Committee meeting. Do you want me to do it, John? We have a Wellness, I can do it, the Wellness Committee, okay. Right now, every three years, we have to do a review of our wellness policy and we're using the WellSat 3 tool and we have three of the five components completed right now. And the subcommittee will be coming together to revise that current wellness policy we have. And we'll also be taking a look at the building level and using the WellSat 1. And there will be a Google form that each building we ought to complete to do that assessment. They also discussed the district newsletter and they want to include more of the building activities in that spring edition. As for activities, Brian Wright, our Fuze Service Director, shared that Reynolds, Palmer, and Eldon, they started doing those famous smoothie demonstrations again with the kids and they really enjoyed that. And he emphasized pressing the buttons on the blender was very exciting for our students. They did a 12 Days of Gratitude for the staff in December and they had 57 participants, which was a nice jump. And they discussed having another challenge in March and a prototype is being developed to be shared out in each of the buildings. Next up, we had January 17th, we're off for the holiday. And on the 19th, there's a joint PTA officers meeting with Superintendent Thompson at the Transportation Building. Anything that you want to report out?
No, we went through the budget and talked about the Lunch and Learn and hopefully we get more participation in that regard. But again, these are volunteers and moms and from the district. And I think we're working well and we're open to any suggestions on improvement and working together, so.
Thank you. And then we had a Facilities Committee meeting prior to this meeting's evening. Does anyone on the committee like to report out?
Yes. We actually started the meeting off with, we just went back over some of the things that we have going on. We started with the 100K projects, both of them. One at Baker for the bleachers and the railings and also the one at Reynolds for the communication system and a little buzz loop work. And everything is progressing well with those. We also talked about the 3.8 project and the 2016 capital project, which are both at SEB now. Waiting for review and feedback. The turnaround, he said, I think it was six to eight weeks, I think he said, was the turnaround for that. Ah, we also don't talk about. We are actually, we're holding off on the part of 3.8 project because of the, over at Palmer on the neighborhood, the sewer connection. Coming from the neighborhood, they wouldn't put that to get done before they actually move off of that. We talked about the capital project. We talked about its progress. We talked about information being in a weekly letter from that, so we can get approval on that and move forward. We talked about funding the future and we're probably going to discuss that a little bit later on in the meeting. We also talked about proposing a capital reserve, a larger capital reserve going forward. 10 million instead of the two five that we have. We looked at the building survey. We talked about the marching band facility, which is being put back together from the fire that took it down. Reservicing the tennis courts and a possible project for the library. If I missed anything.
We also discussed potential building visits. And Kim will be sending out or a survey to the board to gather your preference on when and how we would like to do this as a team. And we'll send out a couple dates for times and hopefully we can all come to a consensus on the date.
We could touch that on a little bit on round table too, if you want to, to talk about.
Thank you, Brian. That's a very full meeting. Okay, upcoming events. We have a Technology Committee meeting this week, Wednesday, DEI Committee meeting. And then our next Board of Education meeting will be February 14th with the Policy Committee meeting prior to that. February 17th, there's another Wellness Committee meeting. And then the district offices will be closed on February 21st with the President's Day holiday. And then the winter break, there's buildings, there's no students for February 22nd through February 25th. And then we'll start March with another board meeting on the 7th. Does anyone have anything else that they want to report out on, anything that they've attended or want to share with everyone this evening?
This is Jeff. Can you guys hear me in the room? Mic check here?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, I did have the privilege of helping to judge the X Robotics competition over at the high school on Saturday, the 15th. And tremendous efforts by all the students, especially the, you know, Baldensville. I think they had three or four teams there, so great job there. But, you know, also a very special shout out to all the tech and science teachers that were there basically running the show. So there was tremendous amount of staff there making that happen on a Saturday. And they were there all day. I think I started leaving about 4:30 and they had lots of things to still do. So it was a full day, but it was a great event for everybody. So please, Superintendent Thompson, please pass along at least my gratitude for all their help that day. It was a great event.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Jeff.
Anything else this evening? Okay, unfortunately Kaylee's not here this evening to do the student board report, so we'll move on to the next part of the agenda. Requests to speak. Do we have any requests here? There's none this evening, so we'll move on to the next section. Result of the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Joan first. Second Denise. Any questions or discussion?
I had a question on the instructional. Part D, federal funds after school. Okay, so when you say federal funds, is this coming from the COVID relief funds? Okay. And then my other question is, do quarantine students have the option of participating in that or just in-person students?
We're using the COVID relief funds for this, but this is no different than what we've done in that building for the last couple of years. So we're just using those funds to support the after-school program that currently exists for students that are in person.
So this is different than the three to five program?
This is, this is different than three to five, but it's essentially academic assistance for students at Derby. Similar to the academic academy that's at Ray Middle School.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to that, Joe. So most, I'm sorry Denise, where you going? So it is, science is a, or science and living environment? Are there going to be any additional areas for instruction other than the history, science courses, classes?
Yep, so we've already, actually already approved help after school in other subject areas in that building. These are specific to science because they're trying to help with lab work and making sure that students are up to date so that when it comes time, they can sit for the reading exam at the end of the school year.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Pass is nine zero. Moving on to the next part of the agenda, we have a leadership report, so I'll let Superintendent Thompson begin with that.
Thank you. We have the honor of having our District OCM BOCES Superintendent present here this evening to talk about the OCM BOCES services specifically to Baldensville, Dr. Matthew Cook. And we appreciate you coming in in person and always appreciate your time, so thank you.
See if I got the microphone or not. You did. Good. So thank you for having me, first of all. Happy to be here in person, John. Long time no see. What I wanted to be able to do tonight was to just sort of walk you through a relatively high-level conversation about what BOCES provides for Baldensville, so that you have a sense of what that looks like and what that is. But let me start by backing up a little bit and just talking a little bit about the role of the District Superintendent and how the District Superintendent interacts with the district. So for those of you who have been around a while, some of this will feel like a repeat. But for those of you who might be newer to the process, you know, we'll try to fill in some of the dots. So OCM BOCES covers a 23 district region, right? Around the suburbs of Syracuse, all the way down to Cortland and three schools on the western end of Madison County. So that's why we're the Anadaga, Madison, you know, Cortland, Madison BOCES, right? Because we cover some of all those counties. Madison County is one of those interesting counties that has several different BOCES attached to it just because of the way the geography breaks up. And there are a couple of school districts in Anadaga County that are not in our BOCES but are in the KU Anadaga BOCES. So sometimes the name of a BOCES is a little misleading in terms of who we actually service. But Baldensville, one of our, one of our bigger districts, one of the districts that we have a, you know, a great working relationship with. Lots of services provided to students and not just students, but to staff as well. And so that's a little bit of what I wanted to walk through as we looked at that. Role of the District Superintendent is also interesting in terms of how we interact with school boards and with districts in that I am both the, essentially the chief executive officer of the BOCES, but I'm also the New York State Representative from State Ed in the region. So I actually have a dual role and depending on the situation and what's happening, I'll be able to serve in either of those capacities for Baldensville. So that's, that's a little bit of sort of about me and what I do. Prior to this, I was Superintendent in a component district in a different BOCES. So I'm in my ninth year as a Superintendent. So I, you know, I bring with this some level of experience, but I think that anybody who has sat in this chair would say, "We certainly don't know it all on any given day." And so we use our network to try to reach out and help each other and help support, you know, your Superintendent here, help support the districts and help support each other because that's what, that's what education is all about. So if we turn to our snapshot, and I apologize to Jeff who is remote. We were in person, so I went old school and have paper here. But Jeff, we can get you an electronic copy of this. The opening page talks a little bit about, just highlights some statistics. I'll just point out a couple that I think are particularly relevant. Cooperative purchasing is one of the services that Baldensville participates in. And you have, by participating in that, you've saved just over a quarter of a million dollars in last year's budget. And BOCES aid is a very complicated formula. I'm sure Kim could go on about it for a while. But depending on the service and depending on the district, there are different ratios and different aid categories and different ways that school districts get aided based on the services that they purchase from BOCES. And last year, you saved about 3.2 million dollars in aid by purchasing services through BOCES. So again, the only other thing I'd point out on the cover is that all of the students on the cover are Baldensville students. Now normally when we go through this document, it's a, it's part of a services visit that my team has with the leadership team from Baldensville. That's a meeting that takes somewhere about 45 minutes to an hour, depending on how that goes. Jason let me know that we are not going to take 45 minutes to an hour to go through this document. And I certainly can't speak to every single service in specificity on this. But if I can't answer a question that you might have, I'll certainly get you the answer ASAP. What I wanted to do was just walk you through the handout and talk a little bit about the different segments of BOCES. Because I think that when people think of BOCES, they usually think of two things. They think career and tech and they think special ed services. And we certainly do those things and we do those things, I think, particularly well and we're proud of what we offer. But we also do a lot more and have a lot more services that I think sometimes people don't understand. And so I'll just start by pointing out instructional support services on the left of the second page. Every service that you see that's highlighted in blue there is a service that Baldensville is participating in. Instructional support services are really, one of the ways to think about that is that's the professional development arm of our, of our program. And it also is a lot more. So things having to do with science kits that school districts wind up using come through there. We also run the virtual academy for students who wind up not being able to participate in person. That's a new service that we just started this year in response to the pandemic and in response to districts' needs. So I think that is a, that's an example of us always trying to innovate and always trying to figure out what is it that our districts need and how can we help meet those, how can we help meet those needs. So a variety of different professional development services for teachers and for administrators come through the instructional support services side of the house. The next category that I would highlight has to do with career and tech and special education. And we do, we are spotlighting one particular Baldensville student. You'll see Caitlin over on the right side of that page. Was involved in the Health Oc program in our Thompson Road CTE program. Particularly enjoying that program, so we want to make sure that we spotlighted her a little bit there. But our career and tech offers a pretty wide range of services. The idea behind BOCES in that context often has been, you know, when a school district can't supply some of those services on their own. Sometimes it has to do with size, sometimes it has to do with resource allocation. And they want to be able to provide a richer academic program or services or programs for students that they couldn't otherwise receive. Then you pull your resources, you put them into one central location and you have students come from a variety of different districts and participate together. A lot of pros to that in terms of, you know, kids getting to meet other peers from different programs, other places, getting experiences that they might not be able to get otherwise. We also are aware that Baldensville has some of their own programs along that line. But so that conversation is always back and forth about how do we continue to meet those needs. One of the programs that we started talking about in the Anadaga region, and we always try to mirror our programs in Anadaga and Cortland because we have two physical sites. But one of the programs we're talking about getting started for next year has to do with EMTs, trying to meet that need. We have a CTE Advisory Committee, the Career and Tech Education Advisory Committee. And we meet with business partners and folks from throughout the region who will help us understand what jobs are out there, what jobs are unfilled, and then how we can wind up working with those folks. And between our students, CTE program and our adult ed program, we do a lot with community partners and businesses to try to fill those gaps and meet those needs. Our special education program, I think the thing that I would highlight there most, you know, that's probably one of those things that people have a fairly decent understanding of. Oftentimes districts can't meet the needs of some special education students because they just don't have the critical mass of students to be able to offer a rich program for students who have that particular disability need. And so pooling resources again and having them go to a different location so that they can get those needs met in a different way is really one of the things that BOCES specializes in. Most of the students in this area would go to our Crown Road program. And, but one of the things that I wanted to highlight is that you can see over the years, we've gone from 19 classes in districts all the way up to 37 classes in districts. One of the things that's really important to us at BOCES is that we offer not just a program where students come to a site, but if we can, have them in programs that are integrated in the district because then they get more opportunities for, to be fully integrated into a mainstream general education program as well as getting their special education needs met. I was a special ed director in a previous life, so that's particularly important to me. I was also a social worker in a previous life. So, you know, my background is one where I really believe that kids should have that opportunity in the least restrictive level of care possible. So really proud of the fact that we've, over the years, been able to increase classroom-based programs and appreciate Baldensville, Baldensville's partnership with that. You can see the Business and Management Services. Baldensville is highlighted in yellow and then compared to the other districts, Baldensville is a heavy user of the Business and Management Services. Variety of different services in there, things like cooperative recruiting so that we can try to maximize getting candidates the most. You know, I know that you just saw, just approved the consent agenda. I was pleased that I didn't see any former BOCES employees on the consent agenda. We're always sensitive to that. So, you know, always looking to see what we can do to help our, help our districts out with different kinds of services in that area. So between HR services, labor relation services, and our business office services, that's what falls under that category. And then the back page is the Regional Information Center. So there are 37 BOCES in New York State. 12 of them have regional information centers and we're one of them. So we have the Central New York Regional Information Center, that's sometimes called the CINRIC. And that's really the backbone of the technology programs in our region. So they operate the Wide Area Network, the WAN, that districts tie into. Our focus in this area, more than anything else over the last couple of years, will come as no surprise to you, is cybersecurity. The threats are ongoing, the threats are real. There are bad actors out there and we are doing everything we can to keep schools and data safe and particularly student personal information safe. So you can see that there's a variety of different programs in there. Again, the idea being that everything that is highlighted in blue is something that Baldensville subscribes to, including Word docs, which we're using right now. So that's the, that's the 30,000-foot overview. Just wanted to make sure that you had a sense of the kinds of programs that you're, that you're getting from us and the partnership that exists between us. I will say this, when we met with your administrative team earlier in the year to do the services visit, one of the things that I've been really encouraged about is that the relationship is strong. And what we don't want to have happen is that in the services visit, that's the only time we're hearing about potential problems. But that is one of the reasons that we use that visit, because we need to get feedback from the field so that we know that we're, we're meeting people's needs. And there's a lot of rich conversation that happens in between the service meetings, which are annual, with a variety of different ways. There's principal meetings, there's curriculum and instruction meetings, there's superintendents meetings. There's a variety of different committees that the folks from Baldensville sit on and serve with us. And those lines of communication have been open for a long time. And I really appreciate that, especially as a relatively new district superintendent. Any questions that I could answer for you? I'm happy to try.
Mr. Cook, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Tony German, by the way.
Hi, Tony.
I just wanted to ask you a question about the esports program.
Yep.
That seems something that I would have probably loved as a kid. I wish we had something. I might let it now if you're offering. But how is, first of all, I have a few questions on that. How is that opened up to the students who are eligible?
So each district would open that up independent, so I can't answer how Baldensville did that. But what we do as a BOCES is that we would then offer that as a service throughout the region and coordinate it. So, you know, how Baldensville students in particular get notified about that is not a BOCES piece of it. But our role more is to say, okay, which schools want to participate in esports? How do we wind up providing the backbone and infrastructure for that and the organization for it?
And so my follow-up to that is I think our last board meeting, we heard, I think it was, but in one of the previous board meetings, we heard from our athletic department about a possible development of like an athletic management, sports management. Is there any, anything in the pipeline regarding, you know, like a, what's the word I'm looking for? Frank? Making it, developing. Oh, like having become part of the- Electronic development, like as far as like the gaming development and things like that. To take those students who already have an interest in something and maybe push it a little bit further and give them an opportunity to dive even deeper and possibly make a, I think could be a very lucrative career out of it.
Sure. So one of our CTE programs has to, has to do with kids learning programming. So we, in our career and tech education programs, we have a program that involves kids learning both the hardware end of things as well as the software end of things. So if a student got turned on by esports as, say, you know, a high school student and then really decided, "This is an area that I want to pursue and learn more about before I even go off to college and decide whether or not I want to learn more about that." For us, that would be that, that's a particular CTE program. Not specifically always connected to games, but learning the infrastructure, learning the hardware, and then also some software and coding.
And you have to, you have to have the foundation before you can get to the higher level.
Exactly.
Now, thank you for answering that and I appreciate this pamphlet, even though it is old school. I like it.
Thank you. Yeah?
Dr. Cook, just to follow on to Tony's questions, Frank Mattis.
Hi, Frank.
Thanks for coming. Just, and maybe it's very, and you just touched on it a little bit, which is the extension where Tony was going, was you've got this computer science collaborative, is that, is it the program you're talking about? Where you get exposure to hardware and infrastructure and coding? May or may not be, but again, I'll continue on, which is, you know, we're seeing an industry now that, first of all, it's very difficult to get software developers and encoders and DevOps and, and security folks. And Jeff usually hires all the people I'm after, so it's hard to get those folks. One of the areas that we're seeing emerging right now is an accreditation program where you go in and learn Amazon Web Services or Azure Web Services. And it's typically a very short-duration program. Is that something that BOCES has looked into doing or, or if you don't have it, I'd encourage you to maybe take a look at that. And there's other companies here in the region that, like TCG Player is a great one that would tie gaming and infrastructure-type services together that I think BOCES and certainly Baldensville could benefit from.
Right. So, you know, I, the best way I would answer that is, one of the things that we just looked at, you know, I talked about looking at EMT programs and working with our, with our partners in business to try to figure out what programs we should offer next. One of the things we looked at was a drone program. And we decided against going with a specific drone program because as we dove into it a little bit more, we realized there's so many things that that's really more about. And I think that that speaks to what you're talking about. So there are ongoing conversations about developing more, more CTE kinds of programs that will dive into this area more, more than what we already offer. And for sure, we're running into the exact same problem that you're talking about. So, you know, in the CINRIC side of the house, we're trying to hire folks who are doing exactly the same thing that you're talking about in the market. We need more folks who have those kinds of skills to be able to enter the market.
Yeah, and I wouldn't give up on the drone program.
Yes.
You know, certainly important to my, my business for sure. But I think if you look at the, the other ecosystem around it, like from electrification to even operator-type training, there's, there's a huge industry that's evolving.
Yeah, and that's exactly it. So what we, we're not giving up on it. What we decided that we needed to do is take a step back and realize that if we're really going to build that, we need to build it with a better depth of, sort of a broader range of understanding. Any other questions?
I have a question. That's Matt over here. I'd just like to compliment BOCES. I have two, two kids went through the embedded program. I have two kids went through the embedded programs. And those are fantastic programs, extremely valuable. I've got one right in Driver's Village now. You know, they expect high-achieving students, and they're just, I mean, you can't speak to how great those programs are.
I'm glad to hear it. So as much as, you know, in a short amount of time, I was highlighting the things that sort of most kids access, but in addition to our campus on Thompson Road where we have most of the CTE programs, we do have what you're describing as embedded programs. So there's one at Driver's Village. There's a relatively new one that we just started with Tracy Road and have the equipment. There's one with criminal justice. There's one with healthcare. You know, so there's a variety of different programs. And when we can have kids actually in the work experience where they're actually working, what I hear about the Driver's Village program is they're constantly hiring kids that have come out of there to be able to work right within the facility.
I just want to like he Martin, too.
Yep.
This is Jeff Marie. Along the technology topic, I'll pick Caiguga, and I'm sure OCC is doing some similar things, getting more into some introduction to the trades for the students. Just wondering, what's Bosie's doing or how can Bosie's help Baldwinsville kind of get our students interested in some of those trades? And what's the pipeline to, like, community college or industry? And what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's a great question, Jeff. I think one of the things that, you know, the pendulum always swings in education. So I think that a few years ago, in my view, the pendulum probably swung a little too hard towards that idea of every student has to go to college, sort of no matter what. I think we all realize that as much as we want all our kids who are capable of going on for advanced degrees to be able to do that, and we don't want to have any doors closed, we also don't need to have every student be thinking about that as the only way for them to have a successful career. So I think what we need to do more is work with some of our school counselors to have them understand a variety of different pipelines and paths for students to be able to go through. Not that they don't do that all the time and not that they're not aware of it, but to me, especially speaking as somebody who was a social worker in a school for a long time, unless you get out in the field, unless you sometimes are able to have some conversations where you really are seeing what the possibilities are, it's hard sometimes to know how to refer kids and have them have the widest range of experiences. And students have great relationships with their school counselors, generally speaking, and having them have a rich and deep understanding of all the possibilities is, I think, where we can help with school districts to be able to do that more and better.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dr. Cook? Dr. Cook, just as a footnote to the rest of the board, it was a couple Friday letters back that I inserted the electronic copy, so.
Okay.
You don't have to worry about that.
Then I will let that go. And I'm happy to be here. It gave me something to do where I'm not thinking about the Bills game last night. So I was joking with your superintendent that I either would be here really happy or I wouldn't be here at all, but I did manage to get out of bed this morning. Take care. Thanks for having me.
Dr. Cook, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. At this point, I would like to insert Ms. Evans, if we could choose here, and take it away, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by mentioning that voting for the Syracuse Area Music Awards is open for round three from January twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth. Our marching band and pep band are both nominated for an award, so please go vote for that. It's a big deal for us. I think it'll be our third or fourth year in a row if we win, so. Also, the PTSA is holding a KPR, Keep the Ball Rolling, meeting this Thursday, and parent volunteers are still needed, so please spread the word. Otherwise, esports tryouts for the spring season are this Wednesday. Beetle hosted the Vex Robotics Tournament the weekend prior to last weekend, and then last weekend we competed in West Tennessee and won the design award. Results for the scholastic art awards are out, and Baldwinsville students who received awards will be recognized at an upcoming meeting. And then results for the scholastic writing awards are coming out on January twenty-eighth. The Collaborative Baker and Dergi Student Advisory Council meeting was rescheduled to February eighth because of the snow day, and the first semester of the school year ends this week. Halfway there.
Thank you for the update. Next up, we have Rocco and Karen. Could you come on up, please, with the special ed budget? Yes. No, I'm sorry. We're going to do, that's what I wanted to inform the board, I'm sorry. Rocco's going to do the special ed budget presentation after the special ed update so it all flows, so.
Everyone's just sitting staring at me like, I'm sorry. I gotcha. Okay. So we'll first go into the budget and then move the update, is that right? So with the budget, if we go to the main page right there and look at that, two things to me like really stand out. First is the salaries and the Bosie's components of the budget are both the highest impact on the overall special ed proposed budget for next year, as well as there's the most variability from the proposed budget this year, or the actual budget this year to the proposed budget next year. So because of that, I want to take an extra time focusing in on those areas tonight, but then we'll be happy to talk about the other components of the budget, too. Whatever you want with questions with that. So we get right into the salaries. First eight salaries codes here are teaching assistant codes, which are per building in the district. So you'll see a lot of variability with the current year's budget and to the proposed budget for next year. The reason, the major reason for the variability is that when the budget was being developed last year at this time, we were basing it off of information about students' needs with regards to teaching assistance supports and what's on their IPs at that time. And since then, so between that time when the budget was developed last year until now, we've had twelve additional teaching assistants added throughout this period of time based on student needs, that we had to add teaching assistants. So that leads to a fairly large increase in the proposed budget for next year because what we're budgeting for for next year is based on the teaching assistance that we currently have for students with their IP. So the numbers shift per school based on kids moving from one building to another, but overall, the raise amount is based on those additional positions that were added over this timeframe as well as contractual salary increases for the current staff. After that, we have, the next eight codes are salaries for special ed teachers and speech-language pathologists per each school building. And with that, we're basing the proposed budget on everything remaining the same in terms of staffing for next year in all the schools with the exception of Baker High School. At Baker, we're hoping to add one special ed teacher position for next year, which really is, would net out to being the same as we had back in 2021. For the current year, we've done a place of retirement. But based on needs, looking at the students in ninth grade coming to tenth grade and their needs for next year, I believe that an additional special ed teacher there was Then we have the home instruction, so when students with disabilities are placed on home instruction, we have some budgeted money per building for that. After that, we have our school psychologists and social workers. No changes in staffing are being proposed. It's just adjustments with staff changing schools, working in one school this year and going to another school, or staff retiring and being replaced. So otherwise, there's no real differences other than contractual raises. Same thing with our non-instructional, which is our occupational therapists, physical therapists, as well as our clerical in our special ed office. So that's the salaries codes that we're looking at for next year. Like I had mentioned before, equipment, contractual, materials and supplies, all of those. We're not looking at any changes in the budget for next year as what we have for the current year, as well as, basically, that's been remaining the same over the past many years that I've been doing these budgets. So then it gets into, I'm sorry, and also with the tuition for public schools, we want to keep that flat, no changes for that for next year. The big changes, again, the shifts in variability you see is in the Bosie's. There's kind of a great timing that I'm present, I'm here talking about Bosie's just after Dr. Cook was here, and certainly Bosie's is a big part of supporting our students with disabilities in Baldwinsville. So how we propose the budget for next year in these Bosie's codes is really based on a fairly simple formula is we, at this point in time, we look at all the students that are currently either placed in one of these programs or receiving services from one of these programs, and what are the costs for those students, the exact cost that Bosie's is charging for us. Then we look at projections of those students. So any of those students are graduating at the end of the year, are aging out, or we know that there's going to be a change definitely happening, we adjust, so if someone's graduating, we would subtract that cost out of that budget code for next year. The only exception to that is under the handicapped Oswego code, right in the middle there. That budget code, we put in additional funds for purposes of fund balance so that we, you know, we're trying to be as exact as we can, knowing, you know, what we know now, but, you know, not having a crystal ball and not knowing what's going to happen in the future. If a few students move in, they need to be placed in the escape program, we would be able to transfer funds from that handicapped Oswego account into the escape program and provide the student with a service that they're required to receive per their IP. So that's how we operate with the Bosie's budgets, putting that fund balance in the handicapped Oswego, but then trying to be as exact as we can on all the other accounts. We haven't received the final service request from Bosie's yet. I like, I think that's the term that Kim uses. I kind of think of it as just the raises that, you know, of the cost of those programs for next year, so there might be adjustments once we hear back from Bosie's if those Bosie's service prices increase next year. But at this time, it's what we know what the current price is to be. And then the last code category is the debt services, which is the cost to cover our own operated special education summer school program, every middle school. And that's the amount that we have budgeted there that covers the cost to operate the program with the knowledge of the fact that we receive eighty percent of the aid back for that program from the state. It just comes in several different times throughout, like, the next couple of years, so we have to have, like, startup costs, and this has always been enough to cover that need. So that was me trying to go through the key aspects of the budget, but I would like to open it up for questions.
Great. Thanks, Rocco.
Hey, you're welcome. And so then I'll go next into, right into the update, special ed update. And I have Carrie Lamacke here with me. She's here available for questions, but I was going to kind of go through it with you guys. I wanted to first go right into our overview of current information and data. So right now, at this time, we have eight hundred, exactly eight hundred students identified that are school age in the district, and that's about a thirteen point six classification rate. And then to give you sort of a comparison on that, the New York State, the last time that they provided the state average on the classification rates, that was at fifteen point six, so there's a comparison that you can kind of see where we lie compared to the rest of the state. And that, I would say that this has been fairly flat for the last four or five years, that we've been hovering around that eight hundred number at thirteen and a half percent, so to speak, with very little fluctuation, up a half a percentage point or down over those years. So that's kind of where we're at with the numbers. We also, our office oversees preschool students with disabilities and coordinates all of their programs and services through agencies and private schools. Currently, we're at ninety-nine preschool students. That's actually low compared historically. We normally have a much higher number. I think you can kind of attribute some of that to the fact that a lot of our area preschools last year didn't provide or shut down, didn't have in person services, and so students were home, and thus were being kind of recognized and identified for the services. I'm very encouraged that we're opening up a UPK here, what, next week, right? So I think that's just kind of being able to offer our families more ability to receive support through a preschool service, but then our special education services can always come into play for students that are, come into these programs and are found to be in need. So our office, also, actually, Carrie Lamacke oversees our 504 plans for the district for accommodations for students that have diagnosed impairment, and we're at right now two hundred and two students in the district that have 504 plans. So that number has been increasing throughout the years, but that just kind of gives you an overview of the students that our office kind of looks at supporting. Pretty cool, I think, to all of this is that in Baldwinsville, we do, the vast majority of our supports for students are unique learners in inclusive environments, and we use a co-teaching model as that means of supporting the students in those environments. We are definitely a leader in our region in this. We've been doing this for a long time, and other districts look to us on ways to kind of do some of the same things, the same work that we're doing here. New York State is actually forty-eight out of fifty in terms of its ability, or its data on how they support students with disabilities, and meaning that they, we as a state, are really doing a bad job of not including kids with disabilities in general education environments. So I think a lot of the data comes from more downstate. I mean, I don't want to take the blame, but our region, I think, generally does a much better job, but Baldwinsville, we are a leader in this. If we, if you looked at the data, because the data is available for every district in New York State in terms of its amount of students being considered fully included, and we are at the tops of that, top five percent. And the way the federal government identifies a student as being fully included is that that student is in a general education settings eighty percent or more of their day. So there's still some variation in that. In Baldwinsville, not only do we have, like, eighty-five percent of our students in that region, but if you really look at it, those students are really a hundred percent every day in general education settings because we are having them, being supported in co-teaching. Our speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists are doing great jobs pushing in and providing those supports, also those therapies right in the general education classroom. So it's really a great model of supporting students with disabilities, but it really also, I believe, actually, the data supports it, and our teachers believe it, that it supports all the students in the classrooms. That having two teachers co-teaching in settings like that is good for all the kids, not just the identified students. Some of the highlights, I just wanted to kind of touch on over the past year. First, we've, you know, professional development initiatives as a district, we have tried really hard to focus PD supports for our teaching assistants. Teaching assistants are critical in the way we support our kids. They have hard jobs. They work really hard. They don't get a lot for that hard work, so the least we can do is really try and provide them with really strong professional development opportunities. I spoke at our, at a previous board meeting about the summer PD that we provided on that, but I wanted to kind of highlight it again tonight and also say that not only the summer PD we did for teaching assistants, but we also purchased a program. It's an online program for professional development and teaching assistants where it's free for the teaching assistants. They get a wide range and selection of areas that they can review and go through, and that they can do it on their time. It's high quality. It gives them support on their skills and what they need, and they can do it on their time, and it supports also their need for their CTE hours for the continuation of their certifications. We also have just started, actually, tonight, a professional development for- We also have just started, actually, tonight, a professional development for all of our special ed staff after school on IP, right, through inclusive schooling.com. It's Dr. Julie Costin, who is a professor at Syracuse University and does a lot of our professional development, had a great session tonight, we had almost 80 of our special ed staff attend it after, after work tonight, and so we're, and we critically, we strategically planned it for a time just before we enter into our hand review season. So it's a four-part series, and by the end of the series, we'll be right in the kind of the flow of when we're starting our hand review meetings, and our special teachers will have that support, and we'll really be able to apply what they've learned into writing those IPs for the upcoming year. A few more things with regards to our highlights, just wanted to mention that we're continuing to do our student-led IP meetings in Baldensville. I spoke many times in the past to the board on this, but it is, I think, one of the best things about Baldensville and what we're doing here, having students come and present at the CSC meetings. We're not trying to push our teachers too much this year because of, you know, there's just so much going on, and we don't want to add too much to their plate, so this year we're really kind of just maintaining status quo with the student-led IPs, and making sure that kids have done the meetings last year, continue to do them this year, and then next year, as we get a little bit better and things hopefully are more normalized, that we will push to have almost all of our kids going through student-led IP meetings. With regards to compensatory services, this is just, you know, something that has been really, you know, brought to light within the pandemic, that students with disabilities, sometimes if they're not getting what they need to their IP, it's on us to kind of make up for some of that support. So last year, when students with disabilities were on remote instruction, for health reasons, they kind of come in school, they weren't, they were getting it virtually, we would follow those kids and their progress on their IP goals, and when they weren't making good progress, we made a, had a plan in place to offer and make up for extra services for the past summer to support the students. So we know that, you know, not all kids respond to all the virtual instruction, and certainly some students with disabilities really struggle with that, so there was definitely a need, and that we were able to support in that way last year. And then with this year, we didn't anticipate the, I mean, surprisingly, but we didn't realize how many kids were going to be quarantined and how significant an impact that would have, so, so we made an adjustment after the first marking period so that we had put into place ways for students to connect with their special ed teachers after school, to get them, try and get them caught up for times when they were quarantined and missing school. So it can be either virtually during their quarantine time, or in person once they return from quarantine. It's, it's not a perfect system, but it's a way, when, when we have it available, we're offering it, and if it's not available, we're keeping track of that data so that, again, for this summer, we can offer some additional supports that we will provide for students at that time. And then lastly, I'd be remiss to not mention the Special Champions event. I know that this has been brought up at the board in the past a number of times, but just quick recap, in the spring of 2020, everything shut down, so obviously there was no Special Olympics that year, and then last spring, as things kind of rolled around, we found out that there was going to be no more, no Special Olympics even last spring. So with the support of the superintendent and the board and our administration, we were able to put together our own B-ville special event ourselves. We didn't call it the Special Olympics just because there's a lot of rules that are tailed with the Special Olympics, and so for us to put together an event and not have to worry about following all of those special rules and conditions, we just gave it a different name, but it really looked like the same as the Special Olympics. And, and there were so many people that came together and did such a phenomenal job, I can't thank everyone, I'll forget all the names, but our athletics department, our facilities department, our phys ed teachers, our special ed teachers, that all kind of came together and made, planned a really exceptional event that, from all perspectives that I heard, was better than the Special Olympics, really, like it was more intimate, families could come, they could identify their kid easily in the field and the events that they were taking place in, as opposed to, you know, a huge mass of people, and and staff were much, they were able to relax more because they weren't so stressed about, you know, the kids like in these, the crazy environment. So, so anyways, long story short, not only was it really successful, but that's something that we definitely want to do again this year, we're going to hold our own event, and we're going to start planning for that right away. And, you know, with the knowledge of what we learned from last year, so that we can make it even better this year. And so that was, I tried to make that quick, but it probably wasn't quick. Any questions?
Hi, Rocco, it's Denise.
Hi, Denise.
I wanted to ask you a question about the co-teaching. So at the secondary level right now, is it math and ELA that have the co-teaching, or do we also have it for social studies and science?
So we have it in, it really kind of follows along with the courses and the regions that get tied into them. So at eighth and ninth grade at DIRTY, we're doing it in math at ELA, and at ninth grade at DIRTY, we're doing it also in social studies because it's the part one of their global history that they're going to have an exam. And then when they move up to 10th grade, we continue with global history, co-talk class, and then we go to ELA, because most students at 10th grade have already taken their algebra regions past that, and now they're going on to either electives, or they have many options in terms of their math. And then by the 12th grade, we do a, the PIG economics class that most kids take. So, so next year, we are in the talks and plans that we want to try and add a co-talk science class at 6th grade, as well as probably 10th grade, and that's part of what that additional special ed teacher that we're looking at adding, or asking for adding for next year is to maybe try a section of science at those levels, and then seeing if we can start to grow that a little bit more, because that is definitely a recognized area of need. We've, we've put the co-teaching model in place over the years through a process of doing it fiscally responsive, where we were shifting teachers that were teaching resource room or whatever to co-teach them, but without having to add more teachers into the fray to do that, so that it was, it was cost neutral, but in that way, we had to kind of prioritize what sections we would co-teach and not co-teach.
Rocco, a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
You know, you mentioned that the number of students on 504s has been steadily increasing. You know, do you have statistics about year over year, like what that, that increase looks like, and is there a specific age group of students, is it, you know, younger kids and middle school kids?
So, New York State, per the federal government, makes us, tons of statistics on our students with IPs, it's a requirement, so we're reporting all these different data reports on it year to year, but they don't make us do any of that with 504s, so, so we haven't made actual reporting on that, that's something that I could actually collect and put together. My, my, my general thought would be is that we, the secondary students tend to get more and more because they are more tied to high stakes type tasks, so testing accommodations become much more critical for students as they're getting older and taking exams like regents exams, things along those lines, and need accommodations. You know, there, I think when you look at just in terms of, like, I'm a part of the mental wellness committee, and, you know, we review data on, on mental illnesses and stuff, that the prevalence rates, when you look at just teenagers, has been going up, the anxiety, we did, we had Dr. Anshel speak, and I did a, you know, community event for us, and he really talked about the increases in anxiety in students over the years. So, so these are kind of areas that I think like kind of impact like 504s and that increase.
Okay, I think, thank you for that. I think, you know, ultimately, I would make the suggestion that those would be sort of important statistics to keep for a number of reasons. My next question will kind of lead into that as well, as you, as you went through the, your budget ask and request for next year, you know, just understanding what that trajectory looks like and how we're going to staff properly and give, give the instructors the materials and coaching that they need to be more effective, I think is going to be important. But as we, as these kids continue to progress and move on in their education, are we, are we tracking the number of kids that come off 504s, and are we, do we have data to measure the success rate of that transition?
All the data is in frontline, so it's very easy, all we can do is to pose on that information and collect that. I would, you know, to get a 504 plan, you know, you have to have a diagnosed impairment. The type of impairments that most of the time kids have that qualify them for 504s are things that don't get cured, you know, they're, they're long-range, long-term impairments, you know, things like diabetes or, you know, ADHD or whatever, these are, these are conditions that are going to have forever, so we don't really see kids coming off 504 plans, I don't think, in fact, it's really probably a disservice, even if we think a kid might need to come off it, because when they graduate out of high school, that 504 plan can lead into college, if a kid, if the student wants to go to college, they can utilize those accommodations in the college, and we don't want to kind of put a condition that might affect that negatively. So I don't think there's very many that we take off.
Okay, I'm clearly in the shallow end of the knowledge pool when it comes to that, so I admittedly, you know, didn't understand.
No, it's a great question.
So, thank you, I just wanted to be sure that you guys are getting what you need in terms of support, and the kids are going to, in return, and any instructors, so thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Malley, I think you know my Tony Germano, I am privileged to have a unique learner in the Baldensville School District, so, and I want to, first of all, with Frank and the board, I want to thank you all for continuing to support that and the programs that are provided by the Baldensville School District. I want to commend you and your staff for your dedication to keeping Baldensville as one of the models for New York State, and really across the country, you know. How we treat and encourage our unique learners is going to project onto how we treat and encourage all Baldensville students. And it's not just going to benefit those unique learners, it's going to benefit all the Baldensville students as they go out there and make their marks in the world, so I just, I just want to thank you, and I want to thank the board as well, and I'm now a part of it, but I want to continue to thank the board, the superintendent, and all the staff for continuing to make that a priority in the Baldensville School District. It will pay dividends, so thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Rocco, we're extremely proud of you and your team, so keep up the great work, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Rocco.
Revenue projection, Kim, please.
Sure, so this is the new format that we said we would give you each month, and saying and promising to give you it each month, there's not a lot that changes each month, but we did do some minor updates here for that document, and then we also included the fund balance memo that we talked about last time. And again, these numbers are, it's too early to really have them moving very much, but I think we'll talk more about the conversation we had at facilities, too. We are hoping that we're a little bit over our 4% so that we can start having those conversations about what we can fund. And then the other piece to this puzzle is the state aid analysis. The governor's runs actually came out early this year, which was lovely, and as you can take a look at these, we were fortunate that we had a large bump in foundation aid, a number of other districts have been getting foundation aid in previous years, and Baldensville has not been one of those, and one of the governor's conversations and promises this year was that she was going to increase that to the districts that had not seen that the aid increase previously. So here you're seeing a large increase in foundation aid. BOCs aid, anything below the foundation aid are really what we like to refer to as expense-driven aid, which means we have to spend the money to get the money back. So as we were looking at our BOCs services, the majority of BOCs are services that we pay for this year and generate aid for next year, which is variable depending on which portions of that, some things aren't addable, some things are addable, so even though you have a BOCs aid percentage, that doesn't mean you can apply it to every service that we get from BOCs, but with that being said, it does stretch our dollars, right? So that's, it's a great way for us to be able to do that. Access costs, private costs, those are all related to Rocco's services, and those funds come in in a number of different ways, and there's a number of reconciliations that Tiffany's doing behind the scenes to try to protect these numbers. So these are the numbers that are on the, the actual state aid run. It doesn't mean when we get down into the detail of these that these are exactly the numbers that you're going to see in our revenue projections, especially as we move through the budget process, so we have a little bit of time to go. The hardware and technology dollars and software library, we call those categorical aid, there's a dollar amount per pupil that's allocated, and again, that's funny that we have to spend this year to get back. Transportation aid is one that is typically overestimated because we want to make sure we're budgeting enough dollars in transportation for drivers, for fuel, et cetera. Tiffany made a shift a year or two, maybe last year, in regards to the fuel, that was an area where we had fund balance, and there was a recommendation to move that over to operations and maintenance and utilities, which was actually a great suggestion that was implemented, because our transportation aid is based on what we budget that we're going to spend, so that's why the portion of the aid is high, because if we don't spend all of those dollars, then we're not going to get aid on those dollars the following year, does that make sense? And then, of course, we have our building aid, and this is another area where the aid runs are not what we anticipate we're going to get. The building aid runs were actually based on a November database, typically it's based on a December database, so we had final cost reports that were submitted between that November and December date with the cutoff, they ran the runs prior to that, so that's a number that should be reflective in the next runs that we got from the state. But we also work closely with fiscal advisors and with Mike Shusta in regards to making sure we have what we believe to actually be the correct number. So you'll see those changes as we work through the budget process. We don't just take these numbers and take them verbatim that that's what we're going to get for the following year is really the gist of, of this conversation. Any questions about any of those things off the cuff? I think we will have a further discussion about that foundation aid during roundtable when we're talking about the facilities maybe as well.
Any questions for Kim?
Yeah, sorry, just a quick one, and maybe you covered this and I blacked out, the pandemic adjustment and then the care's restoration, was that on there?
Yes, those are things that we can think the pandemic for, pandemic adjustment is now gone, and that was actually, that was all state aid dollars that they replaced with those different words for last year to continue to make us whole, so everything's moving back the way it was previous to that. Sorry, no, I did not cover that, great question.
Thank you, Kim. I just have a couple of quick shout-outs, I want to say thank you to RJ and his staff, Rick and his staff, and as well as to Kim and Joe for making this all happen as far as getting us over here to transportation. I think it's working out so far so good. Just another quick note on the data chart that Mrs. Nahorny presented. As you all know, we've been buried with, with all the COVID-related issues, if you will, and the COVID restrictions have been ever-changing, although it's exactly evolving, but it's, it's been quite a challenge in a lot of times, and I know Ken and I have spoken, that this information is a lot of times released prior to us receiving it, and so that makes it very frustrating, and, you know, the state has dropped the tracking, and so has the county, so it's really been placed on our shoulders, and it's, you know, we're happy to do it and try to navigate with it, and we're all doing our very best. And I see Mr. and Mrs. Lietnar in the, in the audience, and I want to publicly apologize to you if I offended you in any way, it was certainly not my intent, and I'm hoping that you have an update with, with Mr. Farrar and getting what you need for your child, so sincerely I apologize, and that by no means was I trying to be hurtful or disrespectful, so I am very sorry. Having said that, we'll go right into next, I'll throw it back, oh, I'm sorry, Chris, athletics, please.
Are there any other questions with athletics?
Are there any other questions with athletics?
Is, is Tony eligible for E? Is, is Tony eligible for esports?
I was going to say, from the, the student report, there's tryouts coming up soon. We can get you on there. You have some eligibility I got. I'm sorry. It's more of a, I just want to extend my, my thanks to you. I know Rocco mentioned the special champions event and I know that wouldn't be possible without the athletics department. I was there. It was phenomenal. All the kid, all the athletes, all of the administration, all the staff that were involved. All I saw were smiles all across the board and it was raining. It was, it was pretty nasty out for, for a good portion of it. But all I saw were smiles across the board. So I extend my thanks as well to the athletics department for, for participating in that. And it will be bigger and better coming, coming up. So thank you.
Thank you. Great, great team effort.
Thank you, Chris. You ready to do the administrative budget? Please.
Correct. And this, unless there's questions, there have been no changes since the last time we presented, so.
Thank you, Kim.
Moving on to the next part of the agenda, new business. Resolved, the Board of Education approved the Baldenso Central School District's single audit, extra class audit and corrective action for year ended June 30th, 2021 pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please? Joan first, Tony second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Resolved with the Board of Education, appoint Diarcangelo and company LP as the Baldenso Central School District Internal Auditor for July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023 school year pursuant to OC and BOC's awarded RFP 222-19. Can I have a motion, please? Joan first. Matt second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Passes nine zero. Sorry, Jeff, I forgot. There's delay there. Item C, resolved with the Board of Education, appoint Menzel, Matt Sperrinbar and company LP as the Baldenso Central School District External Auditor for the July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023 school year pursuant to OC and BOC's awarded RFP 222-20. Can I have a motion, please? Joan first. Second, Brian. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item D, resolved with the Board of Education, approve the New York State URS Employee Retirement System Standard Workday Resolution for Employees Pursuant to the Attached for Those Not Reference in Our Collective Bargaining Agreements. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first. Second, Shelley. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item E, resolved with the Board of Education, approve the disposal of surplus instructional materials pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please? Denise first. Second, Shelley. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item F, resolved with the Board of Education, authorize the superintendent of schools to execute on his behalf the collective bargaining agreement between the Baldenso Central School District and the Baldenso Association of Principals Instructional Supervisors, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2026. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education fund the collective bargaining agreement between the Baldenso Central School District and the Baldenso Association of Principals and Instructional Supervisors, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2026 pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first. Frank second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Move on to the next portion of the agenda, board round table. Anyone have anything for tonight?
Um, I just wanted to bring something up. Again, I've commented before. And I'm not sure how it was done prior to meeting on the board is board members going into the different buildings for visitations, not only to, for facility type purposes. I understand that that's done also, but just to see some of the good that's being done in the classrooms. One thing I reflect on is when McNamara had the presentation and they brought the kids with them to present at the board meeting. It, it just kind of, it's just great to see those kids. And if we're able to be in the buildings, see what's going on, even if, you know, spacing and, you know, what the good comes and bad do, just to see what's going on in the buildings. But I think it's important that we try to come up with a plan or a structure or a schedule for members to, to go into the buildings, not only, I know people work during the day, but I think it's important for some of us who can be to see it in person in, in, during the day as opposed to just outside of, of the school hours. So I don't know if anybody else feels the same way or how we put that in motion.
Ditto.
Well, I just, I know that pre-pandemic, a lot of the, the celebrations and things like that that the schools would have, they would invite board members. So those were good opportunities to go to those things. You know, being under the current conditions and not having outsiders, visitors is as much of the schools probably a little bit more difficult. But that was a way to, to do that aside from going around the building and looking at all of the, the, the intent of a facilities committee visitation is to look at the condition of the building. So, you know, trying to get in there during the school day and look at, you know, get into a, a classroom where they're trying to have an instruction where there might be some deficits of that, you know, create some challenges for, for that process. But, you know, I, I know I went to town, would invite for, I think, it was President's Day or, and then they'd have the magic bus. He'd invite, you know, folks to come in and be a part of that. Mac used to have the, the Veterans Day ceremonies. So you, you know, you'd have an opportunity to go to those kinds of things. That was, you know, pre-pandemic, that was ways that I got into the buildings.
In pre-pandemic, my first two years on the board, we actually did two sets of building visits. One for the evening for specifically seeing like the building conditions. And then one during the day to see the spacing issues, how the space is utilized, the, you know, how many students, you know, some, really see some of the things that we were hearing about that needed, some of the buildings were struggling with. I specifically just remember Ben Buran because my students weren't there. Some of the services being provided in like hallways with partitions for privacy. But it also is an opportunity to show our support to the staff. At least I, I hope this true, at least then, you know, they enjoyed seeing us. They felt supported and they got to show off some of the amazing things that they do to us because I really don't consider us visitors. We kind of oversee the whole operation. It's difficult to see and understand everything if we're not in there.
I've actually had some contact with some elementary teachers and they said, please come visit. Come see what we're doing in the classrooms and the buildings. So I, I just, I don't know how we go about if, if we are either, who sets that up. But kind of like what you Jen said also, not, we're not visitors. I understand with the pandemic and not allowing visitors. And I hope that doesn't hold us back with being able to do that.
In, in the past, it's been a regular thing. If a board member wanted to visit certain programs or certain buildings, you just called up the building principal and make up a time as long as Jason knows that you're there in the building. That's all you need to do is notify him, well, I'm going to visit Ben Buran, let's say. And I set up a time with Mrs. Cronin. And I mean, it's, it's more, you're more than open to it. Even our policy says that as, as long as, you know, you set it up with the principal and then you just let Jason know that you're going, that's, that's all there is to it. You can do that with any building.
We can do that currently now?
Yes. As far as, now pandemic, it's a little touchy because the principals are busy. That's the challenge.
Yeah, I, I would say yes, but we're, again, we're trying to minimize traffic flow. So there might be a little bit of a delay. And what we discussed at the facilities meeting was maybe trying to come up with a, with a common time where we could actually go into the building and, and tour. I know Jeff had, had stated that was, maybe it was Matt. I'm sorry. If it was, uh, doing it all in one shot, doing it, you know, taking a couple, couple hours, maybe on a Saturday or, you know, we're certainly open to the evening. And again, we, we want to, we want to be able to make sure that we fulfill all of your needs and wants. So, um, so Kim, are, are we going to send out a, a survey monkey or a, uh, to kind of gather some times and some, some suggestions?
I will say, just slightly different than Joan stated. We have had some issues in the past and fortunately we, you know, I would say the current board makeup is, was not part of that. But we did have some issues with board members spending at least what was perceived as too much time in the buildings. So at the time, and this was years ago, but we did, you know, if a tour was going to be set up, that it was provided to all board members so that we didn't have specific board members going and spending significant time. And I'm not in any way insinuating that that's what's being attempted here. I'm just saying we did have some issues where it wasn't just, you can go anytime and just let the principal know. And like, you know, so, you know, I think we do have to think about the impacts to what is currently, you know, the principals' daily lives and what the potential impacts are. But the facility committee did not in any way discourage doing tours during the day. We just, our goal was to talk with Jason and find out what is the least impact on the staff and leadership of those buildings and to try to get us in so we could see the things like, like Shelley just said, see what's going on in the classroom, but, you know, keep it to a minimal impact. So, you know, I don't know that in my 11 years on the board, I've ever seen it. Yeah, you can just go whenever you want and just let the, just let the superintendent know. But certainly somewhere in the middle there where we're respecting the, the impact to the day of, at a school is something we got to consider. So that's all.
Shelley, I just looked, I can't pull it up to reading that there says, but policy number 3211. There's 3210, which is visitors to the school and then 3211, which is visitors to the school board members. And it tells you the process, which is, you know, I believe that the superintendent needed to know if I remember that policy.
Yeah, the superintendent needs to know that you're in the building and you set up a specific time with the building principal.
But I think, you know, if there's people that are interested to, I can't remember who made this point during the facilities committee meeting. If it's sort of less interruptions, if we choose to do that, it probably helps if we were able to coordinate it. If we're going to go in there and date the same times, it's one day, one time instead of people filing in and out, especially now because there's so much on everyone's place in each building.
I, I agree. And another thing to consider too is, you know, any, any one of us asking for a tour are kind of putting them in a position where they're not really able to say no. So, you know, I think a coordinated effort of, you know, having the group come in. I'm happy to attend any of those if we do set them up. But again, we were just trying to consider the impact to the, each of the school buildings. So I'm all in favor if we can find a way that works best and probably best for Jason to find out how to work that with each of the administrators in those buildings. Just my perspective.
Thanks, Jeff, and everyone else who, you know, contributed. But I was thinking the same thing. I mean, not just, you know, Monday, I'm somewhere, Tony's somewhere. Do it as a collaborative effort of whoever may want to do it and who may be available to do it.
Yeah, just to touch on what, what was thrown out there too is, you know, not only, you know, I think the visits during the day are a great way to see the way operations happens with, you know, the kids in the building. What I suggested at the facility committee is maybe, you know, from just a strictly building conditions survey, we try to do, say, all the, all the elementaries at once. So that, because I really, when we did that last year, it really, everything's fresh in your mind when you bounce from each one and you can really see the differences, the discrepancies between the ones. And, you know, so if we do say a different type of tour on, say, a Saturday or an evening or somewhere, we can bounce to all five. You don't have to do all eight because I think Derby Ray and Baker are, you know, kind of unique in themselves. But if you did all the elementaries at once, you'd really see how they differ in, um, from a building point of view, not, not necessarily instruction, but just another, another idea.
Actually, I thought that was a great idea, Jeff, when you brought that up. So reflecting back in my first year, all the elementary schools, you know, I, how they were scheduled, they weren't back to back and they were, the secondary buildings were in the midst as well. And I agree with you, seeing since, looking at these buildings at the same level would be very helpful at the same time, for sure. So true comparisons can be made and they're fresh in your mind. Instead of trying to remember three weeks ago I was in such and such building, I don't remember exactly what it was. So I really like that idea. Anything else on building visits yet? Want to say something?
Not on, not on visits. It's, it's related to facilities committees. So when we're done with talking about visits, we can move to that.
If it's a smooth transition, let's go for it. Cause I just have some cleanup items which I can quickly do again. So I want to go ahead first.
Um, you know, one of the things that, that we're stuck on in facilities committee is where we are with funding the future versus building projects and, and strategic infrastructure and kind of what we're calling what, you know, there, there's some lack of clarity on, on where we are with funding the future in terms of the board's support of it as it stands. So, you know, there, there's questions whether we continue to use that branding in building projects, what that would mean to the community and, and some of those kinds of things that we felt would be worthwhile in terms of a discussion with the whole board. Did I elaborate? Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, you did.
I think so. I do. Well, go ahead, Brian.
No, I was just going to say, it's just how do we want to move forward? What's the next step after the, the whole Derby renovation? What's the, the move at that? We're going to follow through with still calling everything funding the future. Well, we don't want to confuse people because funding the future started out as one thing. It's kind of not the same thing anymore. So we didn't know if we wanted to keep continuing calling it the funding the future or if we wanted to say this is stage one, all funding the future. Stage two's coming down the road. Or do you just want to change that altogether and just call it a project?
What, what they have here is we have a PR campaign that we're going to have to be doing. So they showed us two different flyers. One said funding the future, one said capital improvement project. So we're wondering how do we want to phrase that as funding the future or a capital improvement project? And maybe one way we, one way I thought we could word it would be maybe a capital project towards funding the future. And then we're not locked into either doing a phase one, phase two or anything for funding the future, but it still has a little bit of a concept in there because it's a board. We haven't decided exactly where we're going yet.
Yeah, and with, I think as a follow on, like calling this a funding the future project could imply to folks that have been following along that then this may include, you know, this is the first part. Then next may come seventh grade, you know, moving to Derby and, you know, the Ray, fifth and sixth. So we just don't want to yet set the expectations that those are the next things coming, that this may be, you know, they may be unrelated to what we've been talking about with funding the future. So it's kind of where our discussions were in the facility committee.
I guess one of my questions is, as a committee, have you looked at what was, what was in the original proposal that we did not include in this first, I guess, first phase or this, this capital project that's, that we're going to promote? Did you look at those and decide, okay, we weren't able to fulfill, you know, moving seventh grade over? We weren't able to fulfill like the Derby field. Like, did you guys kind of map that out to see what was left over? Is that, is that kind of what you're looking to discuss?
No, I think we know what's, I think we know what's left over. I think the challenge is it didn't appear that as a board, we fully supported moving seventh grade. seventh grade or we didn't fully support yet, you know, moving, having Ray become a fifth, sixth only building. So, you know, it's the challenge of moving forward with that if the board is not in support of that. So that's kind of the dilemma we have as a facility committee is not knowing what direction the board really wants to move in.
We thought we'd, it may be more confusing if we just called it a funding the future project, but at the same time, you know, this part of it is being planned so that something's not going to get redone down the road. So that, I mean, here you could, that's why I thought maybe if you called it a capital improvement project, looking towards funding the future, but not specifically funding the future as a phase one, phase two or phase three. So, and that's what they're looking for because they've got a, there's a time limit here when you have to add this to the publisher, correct?
We need to get it out to the public.
Yes.
So we want to start creating for, I mean, the board action will be on February 14th for the, a vote that we agreed to move forward with. And, you know, we want to start getting stuff out to our community sooner than later so that they are aware where we can get the story boards out in the elementary schools. So in the facilities committee meeting tonight that's in board docs, you can see what we're talking about. Like, we just need to know what are we calling this? You know, we talked a lot at the facilities committee, we can spin things and explain things, so to speak, in the superintendent's letter, but at the same point, like, we need to have capital bold letters that say either, you know, funding the future or capital project just so that we're clear. And I think, you know, we're looking for guidance from the board because both of those things are going to have different questions that come up potentially from different people. Did I summarize that okay from the facilities committee?
Yes, and I think that going off of what, what Jeff said, as far as what the board wants to do, which route we want to go, that's not something we're going to figure out tonight. I mean, we, we have to talk about that. This is more about the branding and how we want to actually name it going out. That's what we have to figure out.
Yeah, we'll forward with the public information part of it.
Joe, what did, what was your idea there? Can you repeat that?
I thought we just capital, capital project towards funding the future.
I like, I like that, Joe, yeah. And I think going with what Brian said, I think that was, I know some of us had some of those questions before and I thought that we had left it where we were going to kind of look to see what was, what was not fulfilled in this capital project, to see how we could incorporate it into the next one. And then we were kind of stuck on moving grade levels and what that meant for our, for our students and what that brings down to like the lower levels. But I get what you're saying, it's not going to be accomplished tonight, but yeah, but John, I, I like, I like your proposal.
We do need to find time though to talk about that because we can't keep saying we'll do it later. We need to find time to sit down and, and knock that out, but for tonight, we need to name it.
Yeah, and that's, that's what they, they need to get, get this going and to get it out to public information.
Does the facilities committee want to keep that branding? Because I, I guess I'm going to look to the facilities committee in that direction. I understand what, what the dilemma and the, you know, the predicament, I suppose, is at this point. I like Joan's idea of keeping the branding, you know, without, without saying this is what the, the funding the future is. However, this is a project that is, that is on the road to funding the future. So do we want to keep that brand?
And it's not going to create confusion, whereas if you just called it funding the future, I think it would really create a lot more confusion and a lot more questions that we're, are probably ready to answer where if, if you just have capital improvement project towards funding the future, you know, that, that kind of sets it up, but you're not throwing out the branding.
I think it ties, it ties in well. Like if you, you know, again, being you, trying to hear the story from start to finish. I mean, we've had this big long initiative to, to fund the future and just to throw that out and throw away everything behind it, I think is, perception wise, is probably not a good thing for us. And I think we should keep that. And I like your idea about, you know, tying in the, the capital project element of it because it at least talks about, you know, the whole thing isn't that, this is, this is a phase of it and then to build in the future phases of where it's going to go. I think that it's a, it's a clean story from a marketing perspective and branding. I think it, it will resonate well with, with the community, so I would encourage us to go that direction.
Jeff, I'll let you go before me.
Yeah, I was just going to say to Tony's point though, and just some background, you know, funding the future has been with us for several years now and, you know, significant number of community members have participated and generated recommendations and, you know, I would just caution that as we move forward, if we do keep calling it funding the future, that we take into consideration the things that were recommended and move forward with some of those. Otherwise, it would kind of be a misnomer to call it funding the future if we don't, and I'll exaggerate a bit right now, but if we don't actually implement any of the suggestions, it would be hard to keep that same branding if that's what we're calling it, but just a consideration there.
Yeah, I think, I think the difference and kind of views is, is it's funding the future, the recommendations that, that were provided three years ago, or is funding the future more fluid than that? Is it, you know, how static is it versus how fluid is it in terms of what are the goals of it? So I think, I think that's where the split is. And, and that's kind of where we're getting tied up in terms of, well, you know, is it funding the future or is it not funding? Is funding the future just an overview of, of having a strategic infrastructure plan with, with some goals in terms of larger overarching goals? So I think that's where I'm struggling with kind of where, well, which direction is it going? Because to Jeff's point, if, if, if funding the future is those recommendations that that committee made three years ago, you know, I don't know that everybody's on board with that. But it, you know, if it's more fluid than that, then, then it's part of that branding. So, so I think that's, that's kind of my question.
I think it's more about the activity than it is necessarily the, what was encapsulated in the, in the initial plan. I think, you know, you could call it build back better, bold and still for all, you know, whatever, whatever we want to call it, but I think, I think it's just to show, at least viewing it from one person's perspective and hearing the discussion and not being privy to, to, you know, the year's worth of work that's taking place. It's still the initiative that we're investing in the infrastructure for, for the students. And I think that's, that's the important message, how that, that the shape of the, the end state project takes place, I think is, you know, that'll come through and, you know, when we put it out for votes, I don't, you know, and then the marketing that goes with that. But I think, you know, the consistency of, yes, we're going to invest in, in facilities and, and it's tied to something we've been considering for a while and then this is what, what the district's come up with in terms of, of an initial plan. I think, you know, I don't, to me, it's a, it's an initiative and that's the initiative should incorporate, you know, the consistency of what we've been talking about and not necessarily the, you know, plan three, four years ago shouldn't be the plan today because things do change all the time.
Yeah, and that's the point I was going to make. I think that what we did in the past from the funding the future, I don't think we're going to look forward and just do nothing that was in the plan. I don't think that's going to happen, but we'll see when we talk. But to your point, all plans change. Any plan that takes four, five, six years to get done is going to change. There's no way around that. So I think that that's something that we'll be able to, we'll be able to agree on, to come up with a decision and do certain things on the plan as we move forward. But I think that we can't, to me, we can't just get rid of funding the future. I mean, they put too much time into it, it's too much, too much is gone into it and we need to move forward with it to an extent.
I, I like what Joe came up with and for me, funding the future isn't a, it's not a dead end road. So it's continuing, it's whether it's, it's this project that you put out in May and then the following years, you're going to continue to put out projects, but it's all doing the same thing, funding the future for the government of the district and students and everyone involved. Joe, I really like how you came up with that, that title.
I'm sorry, Shelley, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no.
I, I think, I think what, what Jeff, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but I think what he was saying is that funding the future quote unquote was used as part of that, that specific plan. So we have to be careful of, I guess, not, not insulting, but insulting those, those who participated in building the funding the future goal with, with the understanding, I agree with you, we're always funding the future, the future is in it. We always want to make sure that, you know, I want to, I want to leave this district better than, than it was when I came and I'm hoping the next generation does too. But to Jeff's point, I, I get what he's saying is we also have to walk that line of, and Brian as well, it's like, they, they made a specific plan and it's, in that plan, you know, things are always changing and we, they have to understand that as well, that six years now, things are different. One year now, things are different, two months now, things are different. But we're still taking the vision that they had and we're still using that. That's why I think we should keep that branding because it's still part of that, the vision.
The good thing is the.
Sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Yep, I agree with you, well stated. And I was going to say, the good thing about the funding the future brand is that when people hear it, they think of things we're doing in the future to improve the district. So that still holds true. So, you know, it's not a, it's not a complete negative to use it, we just have to walk that line that some people are going to say, but you didn't implement anything we suggested. So I'm not saying it's a big problem, it's just something we got to be sensitive to. If we change direction, we just show them why that's a better decision based on what we know now.
Kim, do you have a, do you have a deadline that, that you could suggest for us?
The sooner the further, because we have a vote in four months.
Kim, that didn't mean to be a loaded question.
I mean, we're just, we're bumping up against these timeframes again where I personally feel like we need to get something out to the public because we haven't really talked about it yet.
Well, is anybody, is anybody opposed to Joan's name?
I think Joan's idea is great because to everyone's point, we're not throwing away all the work that's been done. We're always forward thinking anyway and I think most people, I mean, we've lived a very challenging time and things are now aren't what they were when we began in this project. That's not to say that everything or parts of it aren't going to go forward with us. And I think that's a great compromise. It's, it's keeping it, the name there, but it's a part of that vision that the community group helped us develop.
Well, and I think it goes along with the conversations that we had when we kind of scaled back the project, because if you go back to that one grid that we talked about and the stuff that came out and the stuff that stayed, I'll use quickly the example of like the windows and the roof. For the area that potentially, if we decided down the road to put a second floor on, we're not touching that space right now. So we're preserving the opportunity to move into that direction and/or supporting the students that we're doing now. So one of the big conversations we had through this whole thing in the transition was that we're not going to undo anything that we do, but yet we're setting ourselves up for the benefit of the students that are currently in our building, as well as if we decided to move forward with what that master plan looked like down the road or some rendition thereof, not that we have to hold on to everything in there. So I think, I, I feel like we have enough information to move forward with our PR people now. We just wanted to make sure that we were still using those words at some level and I think everybody's agreeing on that. We're not, you know, committing to everything that was in this study, but I'm hearing that we can still use the words funding the future and explain that we're kind of setting the stage for something next. And I think that's to, to Brian's point, we do need to keep moving because as we looked at our doc scheduled tonight and facilities planning, we have another amount of debt coming off in two years, which really we had talked previously about going out with another capital project next year. So we have to work through some of these things in some way, shape or form. You know, we'll probably have another facilities committee meeting soon. I will send a meeting out, kind of come up with what is our next stops? What do we need to get to the board? So if people can let us know that too, that would be helpful. And the only other thing to kind of piggyback on this is the one thing we did talk a lot about at the board, at the facilities meeting tonight to be thinking about is we have about 7.5 million in our two capital reserves combined right now, a total of 7.5 million. And we had allocated or talked about allocating, we haven't done the resolutions yet, but the plan was to allocate $5 million out of that capital reserve to support this project in May, which brings our capital reserves down to about 2.5 million. So one of the things that I just want to start kind of talking and thinking about is if we do have the opportunity to fund reserves, I think one of our recommendations is that we really need to look at these capital reserves to be able to continue to fund the future and whatever that looks like and to support our infrastructures. We know our buildings are aging, we know we have a lot of work that we would like to do and we need to be able to fund that local share. And we can get into more specifics about that at another time that we talked about in facilities committee tonight, to or even put some stuff in the weekly letter and start kind of letting people get up to speed on what those conversations were. We will load the meeting minutes, all the documents that we looked at tonight are in the board docs already as attachments and then we can continue to build off from that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, you know, Brian already alluded to the, the $10 million capital project proposal that we're thinking about from a facilities committee standpoint of the ballot. Mike Schuster said it's not anything unheard of, or Syracuse have, I think he's had a $30 million capital or a capital reserve that they just set up. So it, you know, that's not, not exorbitant by any means in terms of, you know, the local share going up. Projects cost more, local share needs to go up, so, you know, we need to think about increasing this.
I think the important part I heard at today's, or clarification I should say, from Kim during the facility committee is by opening a $10 million capital fund, we're not putting $10 million into a fund, we're opening an account that allows us to put in up to $10 million as we find it available. So, did I get that right, Kim? Because that, when I first heard it, I thought, where the heck are we going to find $10 million to put in this thing this year? It was, no, we're just opening an account that allows us to put $10 million with voter approval, of course, put $10 million as we find it available and it just helps us fund that. So it was, that clarification helped me today that I guess I never really put those dots together.
And they expire, and they expire after 10 years.
Yep.
I have two quick things. We sent out a while ago, we need to do a meeting going into executive session to work on goals with our superintendent. His personal goal is not our district board goals, those are public conversations. We looked at the calendar, had January 31st, we haven't brought it up in a while. Is everyone still available to come back here next week, Monday night?
What was the time again? But can you just?
What were we thinking, Jason, with that? Sometimes we do those at five, I don't know if five's too early. What, what's the, should we keep it six?
On the calendar for five.
It's on the calendar for five to begin, what, Joe? Six?
Six with five, I'll be at court.
Five, you'll be at court or six, you'll be at court?
Five, I'll be at court.
Five, of course. Hopefully the right size.
I believe that's your imagination.
So I have it in my calendar as 5:30. I think we went in the middle and talked about it.
Any of those times agree with me, so I'll just let you all decide.
I'm not available on that day, but will, is, will we begin him like in the Friday letter and then we can provide comments back or is this, we'll only see him on Monday and if you're not there, you're not there? And certainly don't change the date for me, but I'm just curious.
I can certainly put in some of my ideas, I think we've already shared some of them already, just some of the thoughts.
I think, Jeff, you know, because it's a new superintendent and normally we do this much sooner than your vote, we needed to get things, you know, just school year going than we were doing COVID challenges. It's going to be more of like an informal, I think the goals are closest set, but informal conversation with the transition, going through Jason's entry plan that he proposed to us when we went through the interview and process those types of things. But Jason, I can work on a specific like agenda or we can as a team just figure that out. Everything we want to touch upon, and we have the survey that we did last year to review as well. So what time is it?
Well, we know that Frank can't be there at five, 5:30, we can just do it either 5:30 or six, which one's, six is a better for you?
Six is a better shot than I get there.
Okay.
Six, okay, that sounds good. Is everyone on board with that? Okay, thank you. We'll just keep coming here. Good question though. The other thing in the Friday letter and also Jason sent out an additional email clarifying when some of those committees would be meeting, the majority of them are after school. And in the Friday letter, two Fridays ago, was the number of meetings approached. was the number of meetings a possibility to take place for the Code of Conduct, Shared Decision Making, and Strategic Planning Committee. Does anyone, I know Joan wanted to be on all three. You said that, is that still true? You said that couple born? Must you be so negative? You still gotta show up, Joan. I don't know how you're gonna work that. I know it's a big time commitment for some of these. I can go on the Strategic Planning Committee. I think you're looking for four for that one, so let's start with that one. Joan and myself for the Strategic Planning Committee. Is anyone else? And you can email us too if you're not quite ready. You wanna look at your calendars one more time. What about the Shared Decision Making? I don't want to put anyone on spot. Just anyone quick, inter? Okay, I'll go on that one too. Code of Conduct.
I said I'd be interested in, I would do that one. I don't know if anybody else wants to?
I think Joan wants that one unless things go bad. And were you guys looking for two for that? So you're set with that committee then? Okay.
We'd be set with the Shared Decision Making too. There was two for that.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have two more spots left on the Strategic Planning Committee. If anyone wants to shoot Jason or Jason email that. Well, actually, email the whole team.
Were the time commitments in the Friday letter? Like how long they were?
Yeah, that one was, that one was...
You mean shooting an email, right?
Oh, did I not finish that sentence and thought, whoops.
Jenna, I'm interested in that one. I just need to make sure that the schedule works.
Were you interested in that? Need to know? Joe, can you, do you remember?
So we had identified potentially seven to 10 meetings for the Shared Decision Making, which would last between one and a half to two hours. The work's planned to be completed over the course of four months, four or five months. And we're identifying right after school is when these meetings would start, so.
That's strategic plan, correct?
Yeah.
Make sure I have my answers.
Like 3 o'clock, likely 3:30?
So if you're interested, please type an email to Jason and the team to let us know if you're interested in the last two spots.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
I wanted to bring up the topic of quarantine students again. You know, last meeting, it was brought up and we've kind of emailed and communicated that way. So I guess I want to start off first, you know, as an educator, whether you're elementary or secondary, it is a revolving door. And it is quite the task to keep track of, you know, what skills, you know, this student didn't get and that student, when did they leave, when did they come back? And I know I've asked, how can we, as a district, use the COVID relief funds to help support those students that are out without putting extra burden on staff members who are currently in the buildings trying to do their best right now? So I kind of wanted to start there. Have you guys brainstormed any other ideas and how we can support those students?
I know that we've had, we have several programs that we've started, especially with the after-school. Joe, you can certainly jump in and talk about some of the programming that we've added. And it has been, it has been a very big challenge. Joe, do you wanna jump in?
Just that, you know, we still, we were supposed, we have a meeting scheduled with the VTA again in February. I don't know if we'll be meeting before that, just to have a conversation. But as I mentioned at the last meeting, and part of the issue is, again, you know, having folks available to do some of that work. Certainly, students could easily participate in, you know, after-school programming, the three to five, the after-school academies when they're back in session. But we are relying on teachers who know their students best, know what work has to be completed to communicate information to the students while they're out to make sure that they get what it is that they need. There's obviously uniqueness depending on the course and the class. And so certainly, you know, I would just reiterate and highlight the fact that, you know, if that's not happening, then the, certainly the parents should be reaching out to the teacher. And if they're not satisfied at that point, the next step would be the building principal and then working their way up. You know, that's kind of where we're at right now, just given the timeline of, you know, trying to pull people together to, you know, brainstorm additional ideas. The other piece that I would add is, you know, also the fact that we have, you know, certainly that funding to use but if we don't have the people, you know, it makes it certainly difficult.
I know, I know that you mentioned, you know, having, I'm confident that our teachers and our staff members are doing everything they possibly can. And I know the three to five program you had mentioned, teachers are exhausted. So they're not staying, which I completely understand. So I guess my question is not what can the teachers do? My question is, is there something outside the box that we can do? I mean, during the day, whether it's hiring, you know, an extra person who maybe their role is to, you know, connect with those quarantine students just to check in mental health, you know? See if they need help connecting or getting what they need. Is there something else that we can do? Does that make sense?
No, it makes sense. Part of the issue and struggle is though, you know, whether it's somebody who's on our sub-list, other people that are available, you know, there's just not people to do that work. You know, we can think about how we can have, you know, the school counselor, those other people that are working within the building, reach out for those support for those students. Because it is, it is easy for them to identify who is out because they have the ability with the school tool system and the attendance. So maybe we prioritize in that way to make sure each of the building principals are working with their teams to have that contact person that's currently already on staff in those buildings. I think it's gonna be difficult trying to, again, not to put more work on folks in the buildings. It's gonna be hard though to have somebody else from outside hired in order to do that work when they haven't had those relationships established.
Joe, don't make me touch on, but something, you know, this may not be possible, but I don't know, a graduate student or somebody to be like an at-home student liaison. They can kind of coordinate, you know, these are all the students that are at home. They need work and then can reach out to the in-school teachers, you know, at some point to say, all right, I have these students at home. What can I do for them to make sure that they're getting the education that they are required, we are required to give them? Something where maybe it doesn't have to be a full-time teaching position or somebody who's already a sub, is already, you know, extended beyond exhaustion. Because I know that's already happening. But, you know, somebody out there who, and it's probably easier said than done right now because you'd have to post it and find someone. But just maybe that separate person, just to be the, you know, I don't know what else to call it, but like, you know, the at-home student liaison that just basically coordinates everything. And it's not necessarily providing the instruction, so to speak, but it's making sure that the students, and maybe they can provide instruction, but is at least making sure the students have the materials so that they can then coordinate with the teachers and reach out to, you know, make those five or 10 days, whatever it is, beneficial for them as learners as well.
So having lived this in my own house, with one who's been quarantined twice the end of the summer and beginning of January as well, the work is provided. I'm just thinking about like classes like math that are very challenging and they build. If you're not there listening and seeing the samples and examples being done by the teacher, it is very difficult, especially for younger students to do that. So a lot of it, I believe personally, was students have a lot to do when they come back. Getting caught up in, there's incredible services. I can speak for one building, you know, with that extended core where they have the link over to get extra help. There's after-school opportunities if there's a teacher could stay, willing to stay, which they don't have to, and coordinate with the rides from home. But just thinking outside the box, you know, I know that we're hurting with a lot of subs right now. But we also have subs that aren't, you know, general subs are content specialists. And is that something that, you know, we could look into? They're not there every day, so they may not have that dream that a typical classroom teacher has. And is it possible? I know, we don't think that's allowable via the contract with the BT either, but, you know, these subs, you know, can we coordinate with them to help the students after school? Like the tutoring that Denise is talking about? Just an idea.
If I may just jump in, and Joe, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I know in a lot of cases, we've had conversations with principals and the teachers not to have our students penalized during that timeframe. And again, I mean, we've all been living this and it's to, you know, to an exhaustion. And my son was in quarantine. You know, it's all, it's very, a little bit different in every district. But of course, with every classroom, it can be a little different. And, you know, contractual obligations. But we certainly are doing our very best to make sure that students aren't penalized and they're getting what they need. And as you know, it's been an incredible challenge. But, you know, we're trying to work hard. You know, hopefully the new, I wanna say tracing mechanism, but with the calls going out from a robo-call, that's helping the principals and it's helping our nurses. So we are, we are really trying to think outside the box and...
Just gonna piggyback into what Denise said. You know, she's, I think, made that statement from a teacher's perspective with students in and out. It's hard to remember who is out on what day. They're coming back, they're out for quarantine different days. What skills have they learned? So some of the struggles I've been hearing, you know, from parents and also, you know, seeing it myself is, you know, it's not the teacher's fault. They honestly can't keep track of who's had what. So no fault on them, but, you know, kids are being asked to take, you know, tasks or they're taking tests, they don't know how to advocate themselves. And it's 60, 70, 80% of their, you know, grade, but they missed two or three days of instruction, which, you know, pretty much wipes them out for a quarter sometimes, depending on how many times they've been quarantined. So, you know, and it's not, it's not the teacher's fault. I mean, it's, they can't keep track of anything. They're living day to day just trying to get through with the students that they have.
I have a comment on this topic. So I've been through it twice now with both kids. So I've witnessed kind of the, the thing for me is just the consistency. And I know, you know, Jason, we've heard the contractual element of it that, you know, we can't tell teachers what to do. But I think there may be some opportunities where, you know, I've seen some really, really good practices for, you know, some of my, some of my students or my kids' teachers. I've heard, you know, when we heard from Mrs. Leighton, you know, I think we heard the same thing, that some teachers were, you know, providing tremendous support and help and some were, you know, I hope I don't misspeak, but some are doing nothing. So I think it's just a consistency of, you know, can the, can the district provide at least some best practices and guidelines without making them, you know, enforceable or violate any contractual wording? But just, you know, we, we say a lot here on the board that, you know, our teachers are the best, and I agree. Is it, so is it because we're not giving them the tools or training them or giving them the ideas of how to be consistent? You know, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a roulette wheel of which teacher you got, whether you're gonna get homework when you're out quarantined. It should be fairly consistent, I would think, that, you know, the teachers, when they go into a protocol where their kid's being quarantined, okay, here's some things I can do to help that student. Not, boy, it really depends on who's in that classroom, whether you're gonna get anything or everything or somewhere in between. And, you know, I saw it, I saw it that some do, some do a tremendous amount, some do minimal amount. I like, it's not because they're not good teachers and it's not because the other ones are really that much better. I think it has to do with, some just don't know what they're supposed to be doing or what they can do to help. And, you know, if we were to be able to pass those best practices around, it may help some of our teachers, you know, provide more consistent instruction when students are out. And, you know, I agree, it's completely frustrating. And I wasn't, I was planning to be there with you guys tonight and I'm in the same boat, but you never know what's gonna happen here. But it just seems like possibly we could do more without violating contractual obligations that, you know, we could help them. You know, maybe this is something for our, okay, what's the name of them? The learning coaches. You know, maybe it's something they can help with of, you know, hey, what can I do to help when students are out? And so they don't miss much as much and, you know, things like that. But anyway, those are just some random thoughts I've had over the last few weeks as we debated through how to, how to talk about this, but...
I certainly appreciate everybody's thoughts and suggestions and we'll continue to, continue to try to work the issue and work the problem together. So thank you.
Does anyone have anything else for our roundtable tonight?
I think I just want to say, so if the rest of my board colleagues are okay with this, I think like at our next meeting, I'd really like to hear some, some different ideas or some different, and again, what I'm bringing up is I'm not bringing up, put more on the teacher's plate. That's not what I'm bringing up. I mean, I can tell you, when you have over 100 students and you have maybe 10 quarantined, you're teaching your students, but then you're also becoming a tutor to 10, to 10 children who are at home. It's very hard to find that time during a school day to do that. So what I'm asking is how can we, like, we have this, we have this funding. Can we use that? Can we be creative and find some other ways? So if everyone's okay with that, can we possibly maybe hear some ideas next time we meet?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think we've now been through three, maybe four board meetings where the same issues keep coming up consistently. And, you know, with all due respect, I don't think we've really, just putting it through my own memory banks, I don't think we have a sense that we've got our arms around how to correct the issues. I mean, what I'm hearing that students are a month and a half behind in taking tests in their classes and we're maybe not giving them the level of support that they need. And again, to Jeff's point as well, there's, you know, it's, I think it's, it's the exception and not necessarily the norm, but there are, I think there are some creative things that we, you know, we'd like to hear about that we may be considering.
I would also like that because it's something that I've been bringing, I've been bringing up as well. And what I'm really, I fear for our kids with special, need special services, IEPs, TAs. I lived it myself and it's, they did the best that they could do. But there's a lot of, we just heard the report from Rockwell. There's a lot of our students who need additional support. And if they're out and they're not even getting that, there's gonna be like double, triply amount of time when those kids get back into school. So I really hope that we are able to come back next, our next meeting and bring some constructive idea. And I'm just gonna ask this, I have no idea what the three to five program is. Who can, who can partake in that? Who is eligible for that? Because that keeps on coming out, is an option for students to, that they're able to do that? To get caught up, to stay caught up?
Three to five program is housed at the high school. It's a program for students to receive in lieu of at-home instruction or home tutoring. They receive instruction at the high school between the hours of three and five for their subject areas. So there's four content area teachers that cover different days of the week. So there's two hours of instruction each day instead of having home instructors do that work. Could be for students that are suspended from school, students who need additional assistance, students who are on a medical or homebound or even placed there based on... based on their program with special education. There's also a certified special education teacher who typically helps to support, provide that support for those students. So they're above, above and beyond getting that additional support based on IEPs.
Thank you for the, thank you for clarifying that. But my real one concern is, one is since it's at the high school, that's only open to high school students? And if the kids are quarantined, how are they supposed, I'm sorry, how are they supposed to attend the three to five program? Because that's one program that I've heard consistently over the last few weeks that that opportunity is available.
So it would be available for students after they return. It has to be in person, but there's also in-person academies or after school help in each of the other buildings. Hence the, uh, appointment of some positions today for Derby. They also have the after school academy at Ray Middle School. So they make that available for students that, that doesn't, that, that occurs right after school. So students would have the ability to stay and potentially take a late bus as well from that location.
Thank you. We will certainly continue to work, work through the, through the issues and, and, you know, Joe and I can brainstorm with the teachers union as well. And you're right, we're always want to try to do a, a good job better, so. Thank you.
Anyone have anything else for roundtable? Moving on to item 10, resulted the Board of Education entered to executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. That motion please. Frank first, second Denise. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is nine zero. Take five minutes and then we'll begin with exec. Thank you everyone.